Okay, the meeting of the Ascension Parish Zoning Commission, March 13th, 2013, will now come to order. Madam Secretary, please note that all members are present. We have had the pledge of allegiance at our prior meeting. An introduction of staff. Everyone except you have introduced themselves, so please let us know who you are.
I'm Patrice Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Item number five, acceptance of the minutes of the February 13th, 2013 zoning meeting. What's your pleasure?
So moved, Mr. Jim.
Okay, Mr. Kazo moves, that we accept. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Burgess, seconds. Any discussion? Any objection? The minutes stand approved. Item number six, public comment period for items on the agenda but not open for public hearing. Any cards for that? Okay, thank you. Number seven, chairman's comments. I have no comments, so we'll go to item eight. A public hearing to amend the Ascension Parish Development Code zoning tables for recommendations for approval or denial to the Ascension Parish Council. And this is zoning review ID 2294.13. This is a 1.34 acre lot of the Ruby Ori property for Ruby Ori.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to recuse myself from any discussion or voting on the next agenda item.
Okay, we will excuse you from the meeting and we'll call you back in once it's disposed out. Okay, if you look at the information that's been provided to us, it is a request to change zoning for this one piece of property from medium intensity residential to mixed use. And at first, I think what we'll need to do is look at the person who's petitioning for this. Would you please come forward?
How y'all doing? My name is Dean Riley. I've been asked by my mother-in-law, Mrs. Ori, to speak for the Dupuy family who owns this property. The Dupuys have been lifelong residents of Ascension Parish. In fact, if you go back and look at the historical plaque on the St. John Cemetery, you'll see that Mr. Joseph Dupuy donated the property for that cemetery in 1780. So they are a longtime family in this parish. This property we're going to talk about tonight belonged to Ms. Ruby's oldest brother, Berlin Dupuy, who passed away in 1988. They acquired this property in 1958 with the intention of building a home for Mr. Berlin, his mother, and his father. But unfortunately, the father died in 1960, and the house was never built. This property's been vacant since they have purchased it. They have used it as a family garden to grow vegetables back in the '60s, '70s, up until the mid-'80s, and it's been vacant ever since. Right now, the property is owned by Ms. Ruby, her sister, and her two brothers, and the descendants of her deceased brothers and sisters. So if you look at the property itself, put it up here. You don't have this in the packet. You can see that it's on Seabro Lane. It's three lots off of Highway 73. Can I have an overhead? This off the zoning map. And you see, here is the property. Here, you can see that a lot of the surrounding property is zone residential, medium intensity, and the magenta color is mixed use. And we have an overhead view. Sorry. We have an overhead view of the thing. The red here is mixed use, and here is the subject property, right here. If you look to the south, there's warehouses. You look to the west, there's a church. And to the east is a vacant lot that is owned by Climatrol, I think is the name, Climatrol. And I did an internet search on them, and they apparently are in the climate control storage unit business. Okay? Since this is zone residential, you can see that it's surrounded by maybe not, by definition, a church is not a commercial property, but it's definitely not a residential area. So this one piece of property is kind of stuck in between a, in a commercial setting. So it's not really conducive for a single-family residence. So what we ask you to consider is, since it's no longer conducive to a single-family residential use, that we humbly request that you rezone it as mixed use to allow the family disposition this property.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I drive that road at least once a day, sometimes twice, and I agree with his contention that could never be a residential piece of property. It's hemmed in. I don't know if it'll be a good commercial property either because of the traffic there, but I would not oppose to changing and agreeing to the request.
Does anyone speak out in opposition to the request?
Patrice, do we have cards that people want to speak?
For or against.
Against. If you'd like to speak either for or against this, please come forward and sign a card, identify yourself, and we'll allow you three minutes.
Let me sign it first.
Please.
While you're doing that, Ricky, I was under the impression that the property on the Highway 73 side of that lot was also residential. Is that, but is that mixed use?
Yes, sir, that's mixed use. That's mixed use all along Seabro from 73 to this property.
And across the street from this property?
Is residential, RM, yes, sir.
And what about across the street from the other mixed use?
Yes, sir.
Is what?
It's residential. On the one that's on the east side of this property is residential across the street.
Across the street.
Yes, sir.
But isn't that property, I mean, what's on that property? Aren't there a bunch of trailers and?
The trailers are on the property that's closer to 73. If I'm looking at the aerial right here, it's a vacant piece of, well, there may be some homes on it, but it's not that property, no, sir.
Okay, go ahead and identify yourself.
I'm Vic Burke, and I actually live next to the church on Seabro Road. My whole family lives on, a lot of my family lives on Seabro Road. It's a residential community. I know he pointed to the map. That's all behind him on a whole nother road. So when you're looking at that red space that he was showing, that's for a commercial zoned area. The church is not a commercial piece of property, you know? So I would be opposed to them changing the status of the property to mixed use. We moved from Gonzalez to this piece of property to set it up for our personal residence. So there's houses that have been built across the street from this piece of property within the last, I don't know, 10 years?
Five years.
Five years. So, I mean, it's still being developed for residential pieces of property. I don't see any reason why it has to be changed to mixed use other than them to get more money for the property. I think somebody would still purchase a piece of property, put a house on it. And, you have any questions about?
Okay.
I really wasn't planning on speaking, but.
All right. Inviting the questions of Mr. Burke. Okay, anyone else want to speak on this agenda item?
My name is Brian Maloson. I live directly across from the property. My family owns the land directly across, which is still residential. I don't see it, you know, that ever changing from anything but residential. And to make that other side business will devalue the residential side of our property.
Okay.
I don't see any point in making it business when there are people I know who have looked at that property for residential purposes, but just can't afford the price tag that's being asked.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to speak? Ms. Kazo?
Yes, thank you. I'm Terry Kazo. I'm the councilwoman in District 8, and I thank you for allowing me to share with you my perspective. I am very concerned about the church. The church has been a wonderful addition to the Dutchtown community for, since 1960s. It is a thriving, active church. It is not a little sleepy church anymore. And so, and it is a Baptist church. And so I'm extremely concerned about what might find its way into that section were it to become a strip center. I would hate to see an adult bookstore or anything that was totally inappropriate next to a church. And although I realize there's some liquor regulations, and it would not be that, that it could still be something that was not appropriate to what is a neighborhood. I mean, this is a street that has all houses along it and these two churches. So I'm very concerned, and I would ask that you consider that I think there may be some, the public might be better served to leave that piece of property as it is. And the family certainly could sell it for a reasonable price and perhaps even as a residential lot. Thank you very much. Please consider that church for me.
Thank you, Ms. Kazo. Anyone else like to make comments?
Could I say the aerial view again, please?
Sure. So here's the, here's the property, subject property here. And we agree that there's residential across there. There's, you know, it's no doubt that that is a nice neighborhood. And if this church was a nice residential home, or if there was one on the east side, we wouldn't be here tonight. You know, a 1.3 acre lot in Dutchtown is very desirable for a house, for a home. It's just, who's going to build a home stuck in between, while the church is definitely not a commercial, but it's not residential either, and maybe climate control storage on one side and warehouses in the back? It's just limited to what you can do with this property. So the only reason we're asking here is because it's kind of stuck out there in the middle of nowhere, and there's really almost nothing else we can do with it. So we just ask that you consider rezoning it.
Mr. Chavezy?
Mr. Chairman, I travel that road probably twice a day, also with my fingers crossed, both hands on the wheel. It's a narrow road. I, you know, the commercial property in the curve, I can't imagine anyone who would require a lot of traffic into their, into their business wanting to build anything there because it's, I think personally, it's a dangerous, it's a dangerous spot. Now, the lot we're talking about is zoned medium intensity residential. Does that, what is that a lot? Does that allow multifamily housing?
No, sir. No, sir.
Only single-family housing, that's it?
Single-family, yes, sir. Correct.
Because it'd be a great spot for apartments, you know, for multifamily home next to the church like that. But I see it as residential, too. I don't see it as commercial. I have a fear of commercial establishments being built toward 73 from that property, just because of the narrowness of the road, the nearness to the curve, the amount of traffic that uses that now. It's an amazing amount of traffic for a road that's, that is almost entirely residential from that spot on, so.
Other comments?
My only comment on this thing is that I kind of have to agree with Ms. Kazo that while there are some regulations in place that would prevent alcohol being, an alcoholic business or being located at that spot, if we should change it to a mixed use, there's no way we can control exactly what is going to be located next to that church. And while that may not be your problem as the owners, we have to be careful about what we allow to set up in an area that could, like she said, an adult bookstore, any, any kind of, once it's a mixed use, the residents that live across the street can be affected by anything that a mixed use will allow, from funeral parlors to anything else. And so we have to take into consideration by going to mixed use, what doors are we opening for that location? I mean, I can look at your overhead and see why you would want to make it a mixed use because of the neighboring lots on the side of the, you opposite the church. But at the same time, I'm going to have to say I'm a little bit leery about making it mixed use because we don't have control over what goes there, other than what possibly the alcohol regulations would prevent from being there. And that's my feeling on it.
Other comments?
I would just say that the, what has been brought forward has persuaded me to change my opinion.
Okay. And we do have a recommendation from staff to reject the request?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Based on?
Based on existing mixed use district along Seabro Road is sufficient at this time, and placing more commercial traffic in that mixed use could bring, that could bring along Seabro is not conducive at this time. Just feel that at this point, along Seabro, there's already 1,000 feet of commercial along there, and I don't think putting more on that road with access is good, would be a good thing at this time.
Other comments? Want to make one last comment?
We had discussed the 1,000-foot issue, and it's 145 feet wide. And I understand the issues with the church. I really do. I, if you look at the table, the uses permitted in the zoning that it is now, the high, the medium intensity rule, the only thing that we, that they can use this property for is farming and livestock, a single-family residence, public utilities or storage, or signs and advertising or ponds or dirt pits. If, if there was a way or a different zoning that we could add to it to put the multifamily units in, that would be acceptable to us, acceptable to the family, I think. But, you know, they're kind of limited to what they could do with it zoned like it is. So if it's denied, we're looking for suggestions of what else can we do there? Because there's almost no way that anybody would build a nice home on 1.3 acres surrounded by what's there now.
Lance?
Well, we do have a mixed use two district. It wouldn't allow multifamily. It would allow single-family, but you could put townhomes and those type of things there. And it is that transition between residential and commercial. I'm not going to say that every use that's going to be there is going to be perfect, I guess you can say, for that location, but it is a district that we have for that transition between residential and commercial.
When you say townhouses, on that particular piece of property, more than one?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it would be whatever the density would allow. You would have to look into the subdivision regulations, see what the density would allow for townhomes. I don't know if, what the size of them, what size, I'm sorry, the size of the property again?
What size? It's a 1.34?
I don't think it would work there.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I see that for contractual agreement, things such as medical dental clinic?
Yes, sir.
Indoor amusement facilities, and a few other things like that, recreational facilities and so forth. So there are some other options?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd be interested in how the folks that spoke against it would feel about a transitional zone.
Come on up.
See, what y'all talking about? Y'all talking about it being a multi-dwelling? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. Not at all. No, a single-family.
Okay, see, this is the thing. I think that the property would sell for a single-family. I think maybe what he's asking for the property, he's wanting a little bit too much money for it. So I think if he was serious about selling the property, he brought the property, if he brought it down to a reasonable amount, a single-family would buy the property. I mean, I think if he's really trying to get rid of the property, I think that what they're doing is they're trying to change the definition of the property so they can get more money for the property. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, because we've been watching the price go up since we moved on our property, and I think that's the main issue. I think if he really wanted to get rid of the property, bring it down to a reasonable amount, and market it as for a single-family. That's it.
I have some sympathy for the owner because you could envision the possibility of a commercial establishment next to it, which would really make it difficult to sell for a single-family. That's why I like the idea of a transition, not just unfortunately. Lance, it doesn't seem like it works well for anything other than single-family.
Yes, sir.
Because of the size that?
Yeah, because of the size, yes, sir. It's 1.34 acres. I mean, but doing any type of townhouse or anything like that just wouldn't work. I mean, there's some other things in there, you know, in the MU2 that, that could be permitted. I mean, for instance, offices, beauty salons, daycare.
You're talking about under the?
MU2.
Or under the MU2?
MU2, yes, sir.
Transitioning.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go through that list again so people, so everyone here could hear it also.
Sure. Office activity, barber and beauty shop.
Office means, meaning like what?
Office like real estate, professional offices, even doctor's office.
Retail sales or?
Retail sales are permitted in there. It's later, it's further down the list, servicing goods-oriented shopping. Restaurant could go there in that MU2 district. So I'm not going to say that every use is going to be perfect if we, you know, if it would be changed over for that particular location and for the surrounding area, I guess.
Straight mixed use would allow what in addition to MU2?
It would allow, yeah, it was, it would allow bars and lounges, boat cells, exterminating, septic tank pumping, furnace cleaning, funeral establishments, crematoriums, kennels, those type of things.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Compton?
I would just like to add that the property is forever going to be limited by its size unless you rezone it to mixed use. Because zoned mixed use, you're now contiguous with the property next door, and now that property gets eaten out by part of what could be a much larger development. So if it's mixed use two, you do have some transitional commercial possibilities, but an office building on a 1.34 acre site is never going to be more than about 3,000 or 4,000 square feet because you got to park it, you got to provide drainage, the structure. If you go to mixed use, you've opened it up to be annexed into that larger parcel and become a big development. Mixed use two does give it a true transition, a break between mixed use and the church, and you're really going to be limited by a user that needs a small commercial site. It could be a real estate agent, an attorney, a very small dental office that doesn't have a lot of patients that are backing up in a waiting area. So, you know, I think the mixed use two is a compromise.
Mixed use two would also allow single-family residence.
Oh, yes, sir.
Or anything else. So it's a, it's an option to think about. If the applicant would, would come back, I don't know, would that be something we'd want to consider? Would that, would that be something that would be acceptable to the residents along Seabro Road?
Mr. Burke?
We were trying, we were discussing if it would allow for retail sales.
Mixed use two would allow retail sales?
It would, but once again, it's not going to be a strip center. It's 1.34 acres. It's maybe going to be 5,000 square feet, so that's two bays of a strip center. Typical strip center is going to be about 2,000, you know, 20 feet wide by whatever the depth. They got to park it, they got to drain it. It's never going to be a big deal, but it does open it up for retail sales. Yes, sir.
The church is basically a residential piece of property. I mean, I can't control that it was a church, but they've been there for, you know, a long time. That, this piece of property's been on the side of the church for a very, very long time. When the property value started rising after Katrina, this property doubled what they were asking for originally. All they're looking for is more money out of, if he wants to get rid of the property, if he dropped the property, a residential person could potentially pick it up. I don't, you know, I don't see the problem for that. I mean, if I, if I wanted to change my, I got two and a half acres. So I can, you know, can I, can I change mine to mixed use so I can turn around and, I want, I want $3 million for it? You know, I mean, that's, that's the issue. I think if they wanted to really get away from the property, put it at a reasonable price and sell it to a residential family.
Okay, thank you. And of course, this, this commission could not commit at a further date that we would approve a mixed use two request. I mean, it's, even though someone would suggest that to you, there would be no guarantees that, that it would be approved. So any other discussion?
If we opted to go to the mixed use that allows for commercial development, one concern, considering that area, the road, commercial developments in this district should be limited and located at highway intersections. Well, where this is proposed to be, it's not near an intersection. So it changes the character. And then, when you look at one of the basic tenements of our master plan, protect the public safety and property, that we're just violating that tenement if we change that concept. So I, too, have a problem with changing when you consider we have a, again, the number one tenement on our master, protect public safety and property. That changes something.
And Ricky, absent the other designation, are there any other creative solutions that might be offered?
It's too small to do a spud, which would lock them into a very specific use, but it doesn't sound like the families in the development business, they're trying to market a piece of property. So the spud would have to lock them into a building, a use, some other things.
I only ask because I figure there are other lots like this around the parish that may come before us and be good to know.
Okay. All right. If there is no further discussion, gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
I move for denial.
Mr. Burgess has moved to deny. Mr. Callender has seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor of that motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion is denied. Next item is item nine, public hearing to amend the Ascension Parish Development Code for Recommendation for Approval or Denial, a garage sale ordinance. And I think in our packets, a proposed ordinance has been, has been given to us. And this, as I understand, I was not at the last meeting, but this is something that, yes?
You need to call Josh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Josh? And Madam Secretary, please note that Mr. Ori has returned to the meeting. This, as I understand it, I was not present for the last meeting, is something that the parish council requested of us to find or to recommend or to propose a garage sale ordinance. Mr. Compton?
Yes, sir. It actually came from strategic planning through a complaint to a council member about a specific person in this parish who has been holding garage sales that they believe are too frequent. So this ordinance that was originally brought to us defines a garage sale, and it defines personal property. And the argument I made last month was it doesn't solve the problem. The problem is. The problem is a person is having too many garage sales. And so what we handed you tonight was a revised ordinance that starts to define what an actual garage sale is, the permit requirements, because the only way we're going to track if somebody's having too many garage sales is if we issue a permit. That wouldn't be a zero-cost permit, because there is man-hours that are being extended, and if we have violations, we are going to have to send people out to investigate, and there will be cost associated with that. We identify that no person shall have more than four garage sales in a year. We identify the duration of a proposed garage sales. We identify where signs may or may not be located. And we have a, how do you cancel your garage sale? Where they may be located in the location section. We have the fee of $10 for the garage sale permit. And we have compliance inspections by code enforcement department, and penalty for violation references the code. This sort of an ordinance is what we feel, if the commission and council wanted to move forward with a garage sale ordinance, is what would be required to give my department, i.e. code enforcement, the ability to identify if someone is having or has had an illegal garage sale, so that we could begin the process of determining if they've had another or an additional illegal garage sale, so that we could actually enforce a code by simply defining garage sales and saying what a person can sell in a garage sale, that's unenforceable. I can't walk up to a garage sale and determine whether or not something is personal property or has been purchased for the specific purchase of reselling. That doesn't solve the problem of too many garage sales. So we present this to you for discussion and potential moving forward to the council with a recommendation. And you can move one ordinance, both ordinances, neither ordinance, it's up to you.
Mr. Chivasi?
Ricky, are we about to act on an ordinance because of a single complaint for a single person? Or is this a pervasive problem in Ascension Parish, garage sales?
This is a single complaint for a single person, as I understand it. Yes, sir.
Because it sounds like we're, we're doing an act of Congress for something that's not really a problem here.
I haven't been here as long as Mr. Brock. But I'm pretty sure this is the first time we've had a complaint about garage sales at the parish.
Also, it's fraught with interpretation problems. Most garage sales are, many of them are joint garage sales between two or three families. So like, if they're having garage sales, two of them, do they get eight garage sales? If three of them do it, do they get 12? And how many items are in a garage sale? Do you have to have 15 items before it's a garage sale?
Seven, at least seven.
What if you have a classified ad, the newspaper saying you're selling three items? Is that a garage sale?
Yeah. This could be a, a three-volume ordinance, correct?
Yes, sir.
It kind of sounds almost like this is a solution looking for a problem. Yes, sir.
Is this, is this a public hearing, right?
This is a public hearing, yes.
Let's hear from the public.
Is there anyone who would like to make a comment about this proposed ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, just, just as a comment, I, I think we're looking at overkill here on this particular subject. At this point in time, I'd like to take some action to kill this thing right here and now.
Let it die a natural death.
I mean, does the parish council absolutely have to have our approval before they can act on an ordinance like this?
They don't have to have your approval, but they sent it to you for a recommendation back to them. And if the recommendation is to take no action or to kill it, then the chairman of the council has the option of sending it back to his subcommittee for further review, or they can take it before the council and, and take an action on it. But based on the fact that it was sent to you by a council subcommittee, you need to send a recommendation back to them.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we send a recommendation to kill this to the full council. Unless you want to call it deny.
Yeah, let's use a different wording than the.
Kill, maybe.
We will.
This is overkill.
A, a motion to deny this, this recommendation, or, or, you know, deny the recommendation to the, to the council of this proposed ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any other comments? Words of wisdom? All in favor of denying, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will deny this recommendation. Item number 10, staff report. Do we have any other items? Staff report. Item 11, adjournment. What's your pleasure? Any objections? Adjourned.